Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. This is the October 1st council meeting. October 1st it is today, Thursday, 2020. We'll go ahead and observe our moment of silence, pledge of allegiance, and we'll start today's business. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do not have any guests that called in to speak to us, to put us on the agenda, but Bryson, are you wanting to address this this evening?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, since we have nobody that's registered ahead of you, the floor is yours.
If you'll come over here, Brian. Good time. We don't let their own in there.
Well, folks, nice to see you. Thanks for letting me speak. I guess I don't have, I'm here to express support for the parking policy. And so what I'm hearing is that there's change coming or being discussed at the city level to alter the current parking policy. For those of you that weren't part of city government in 2015, I produced a parking policy, which was about a year-long effort. It was paid by the West Virginia Development Hub, and I was paid by that organization to provide this professional overview of this current parking situation for downtown. I don't know if any of you have read that or seen that before. It's five years old and stuff gets lost pretty quickly. There are some really good fundamental concepts in that parking policy that I think, hopefully before any changes are made to a parking policy, that you can kind of touch base on that report. The fundamental concern that I think all of us have is we realize, like all of us in the room that make Buchanan a better place, you know, every day, is that we'd be as welcoming and positive and friendly as we can be. And when we've got repeat offenders, you know, violating our parking policy, we need to have a proper enforcement method of doing that. And so, you know, the fundamental guiding principle, I suppose, of our recommendations for this parking policy was that, you know, we implement a warning system so that folks that are unfamiliar, that are visitors to the community, don't get hammered with a fine. And prior to this, prior to us producing this recommendation of this study, the city was collecting about $25,000 a year in parking income. About 15,000 of that was fines, $25 two-hour violation fines, which basically represented 500 people a year that were getting $25 fines. No one knows exactly without doing the research, but we were guessing at least half of those people were folks that, you know, at least 250 of those people were folks that were coming through town, that were not from here, didn't know the rules, and walked out of here thinking Buchanan was kind of hard town. And so, all that said, I'm not familiar, I know there's been discussion in Consolidated Public Works about altering the parking policy. I'm not sure really what's on the agenda for you all to, what specific issues are being addressed, but I guess I wanted to bring this report back to everyone's, bring it back to the surface, and maybe you might find some good thoughts in there. So that's all. I guess I don't have anything to say because nothing's really been proposed. I haven't heard any possible changes, but I know, over the years, of course, I work here, spent most of my life on Main Street, I see that parking, the enforcement of the plan is not, hasn't happened. You know, we've implemented a lot of things. I mean, of course, Jerry's, you know, we recommended capturing more parking spaces in 2015, and I mean, so much of all those things that kind of come in has happened. Any parking, any parking policy should be a live document that's constantly checked for accuracy. And, you know, when Community Care went up down the street, you know, their parking needs, you know, they injected a whole bunch of parking needs at one time. Likewise, the Development Authority building, when it's fully occupied, will also have those different, you know, will have impacts. So it's not something that, you know, it's set and then it goes. I mean, it's something that needs constant review, but hopefully the fundamental principles of being nice to the folks that don't know the rules and being hard on the ones to do. I think that's fair. So anyway, that's enough. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
So I think what was discussed and consolidated was reducing it to one warning, and I don't agree with that because I think, you know, we're trying, if we amp up this punitive system to modify the behavior of the chronic violator who doesn't care what the rules are anyhow, then the rest of us all get put under this veil of enforcement when it's not effectively doing what we're trying to accomplish. So I mean, I'm thinking about this, you know, I don't, I like the two warning policies. If you're a chronic violator, and we are, and if we are enforcing it, they're going to use up that pretty quickly. And then if it's the third, the third time you get it, there's no excuse. You know, what, you know, you've been told twice, and the third time you're going to get it, and it's 50 bucks. But apparently, some people pay the 50 and keep doing it because they get away with, they only get caught one out of 10 times if they do it. So maybe the second time is 100, the third time is 150. But the other issue is, we don't have a cumulative amount of hours. So what these people are doing, they'll park here for, you know, and get up to the limit, move it across the street, or roll it forward. I think, you know, a three-hour aggregate limit for a 24-hour period. Now, enforcing that could be problematic, but if it's on the books and you have someone putting it in your face all the time, then you have a toll to use against them.
CJ, my first, my first need as a designer, my first need is, okay, how do we document the problem? And is there a problem? And if there's only two or three chronic violators on Main Street, I mean, we all can see the cars, we kind of know what's happening. And if there's two or three parking violators that game the system, I don't know if that's enough to change an entire policy from the city's perspective. But we all know that the fundamental basis is we want high turnover traffic on Main Streets to support the businesses, and we want long-term employee parking free along the perimeter, and you walk in. And so the question was, how do we, you know, that's why we removed the meters off of the parking areas, to make it free, to encourage people, just park there, and you won't have to worry about getting ticketed. Yeah, so we do have only so many parking spaces on Main Street, and even the side streets to support. So this is really a business-focused, a business, you know, sympathetic approach.
And the people know that weekends and evenings it's not. So I have, you know, there's people that pull up and park their car at 4:00 and it's there till, you know, midnight.
But you must admit that that's not, that's not happy to people.
No.
It's just a feeling we know. Now, one thing that this report pointed out that really, I think, doesn't necessarily be obvious to all of us is that the optimum design capacity for a street or a parking area is 85%. 85% full is like the sweet spot. If you walk into a restaurant and it's 85% full, you're happy. Like, it's a good, it's a good feeling. You walk into a restaurant and there's 10% in there, it feels empty. You walk in there and it's 95%, you're like, man, I can't even breathe, I've got to get out of here. But 85% across the United States is the design target. And so you want a mall parking lot, 85% full. You go to a mall and there's 5% and think, ah, the place is dead. So every time I see what I think is a violation, the first thing I do is I see, I'm looking, okay, are there empty spots? And if we're less than 85%, I don't think it's a problem. And I think, I mean, we see, we know these violators that are kind of around town. If you see a violator and it's 100% full, then we got a problem. My gut feel is that, and I don't know, I mean, all of us, you know, we all work in town. If you can see two, three, or four empty spots, I don't, I don't think it's that big of a deal. I mean, it's a turnover issue, that's the problem.
If it's arbitrary in that manner, and you're making a subjective enforcement decision, then because there was four other spots, it's not a problem, but when there isn't, that kind of clouds the issue.
I'm not talking about, like, a double standard for who's enforcing the policy, but I'm just saying from the big picture design, which is where you all are now, trying to decide if this policy is working or not working, you know, whether the, you know, does it meet trend or modify. I just want to point it out that 85%, that's what I always keep coming back to, is like, you know, like, 85%, that's where we want to be. You know, so it doesn't help us to enforce a hard policy when we're only 50% full.
Well, I think it is important to note, from the Consolidated Public Works Board meeting, a big, a large portion of the discussion was consistent enforcement.
Absolutely.
I mean, we, no matter what we put on paper, if we don't have a consistent force out there just monitoring and keeping it honest, it doesn't, it's not worth the paper it's written on to have a policy if it can't be carried through. So that was one of the things, that was a, that was a large portion of our discussion, and how did we get there.
For the record, I completely support enforcement, you know, 24-hour enforcement. I mean, I think we've generated a very lenient, sympathetic policy. And I think enforcement is, you have to have enforcement so people know what's going on, you know. And so I totally supported the enforcement aspect.
What about the warnings? Do you think this should be shrunk to one, or that, you know, we want to make sure we're not catching the?
As far as I'm concerned, if I've gotten one warning in the town, I know the rules definitely. Tom can answer the legal question about how much notice do you have to provide, you know, and those types of things, but I'd say, from my perspective, if you know someone's gotten a warning, they know. You know, so I mean, you know, Morgantown, which has, I work in Morgantown a decent amount, and I, you know, they've got a tremendous parking problem, as you can imagine, with all the students and, like, if you get a parking ticket downtown, it's five bucks. It's not a giant slap in the face, you know, it's five bucks paid. But to get a $25 ticket, that says a lot. And I know we've talked about even ramping it up to more than that after you've got a second or third. I like the idea, frankly, if someone's a repeat offender, keep ramping it up. I don't have a problem with that.
That was part of the discussion as well, is because if, if they're going to continue to just get $25 ticket after $25 ticket after $25 ticket, we're not, the problem still exists.
Sure, because we're losing far more than $25 to the businesses.
Yeah, the average parking space in front of a business generates $75 an hour.
Yeah, an income.
An income for the business.
Sure, I buy that, yeah. Well, it may seem, I don't know, it may seem like it's not that critical, but for all of us that are trying to make this a, you know, a positive image for this community, a lot of it has to do with that interface of the parking, for sure. So either way, sorry to take time, I've got lots of other things to do, but please, if I can help in any way, if I can get copies of this to anybody, all of you, I'd be happy to get those. I'm sure actually, Ambie probably has a digital copy of all of that. Of particular note, for those of you that haven't seen this, well, it was on the CD. This booklet has a, has a CD in the back of it, but basically, we did drawings, and one of the greatest drawings, I think the most impactful drawing is a map of the downtown, which basically runs from, you know, the 88 all the way to St. Joe's. And, you know, we overlaid the footprint of Walmart on that map, and the Walmart building basically goes from Front Door City Hall pretty much to the courthouse. I mean, that's just the building of Walmart. And the building of Meadowbrook Mall actually encompasses 88 all the way to the end of St. Joe's Hill. And we all know that no one complains about walking in Walmart. I mean, no one complains, no one says there's not a parking, no one complains about walking the length of Meadowbrook Mall if the, if the walk is enjoyable, you know. I mean, no one wants to walk past boarded-up stores, and so, but...
Which there are more of those at Meadowbrook Mall than are on Main Street in Buchanan right now.
Yeah, you add to that. So my point, though, is that this concept of parking is, it's delicate, and it's largely a perception that's not necessarily based in complete reality, but anyways.
Here's a copy of the packet, and it has the first draft and the postal ordinance in the back of it.
Okay. I hope the changes are highlighted in red. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bryson.
I'm definitely happy to, happy to contribute however I can to that discussion. Thank you. Thank you all.
Have a good evening. Safe travels home. Don't hit any deer.
You jinxed them now.
Yeah, it's getting to be deer season, so.
It's close to kiss the death, man.
Okay, you know what that is? They say in West Virginia, it's what, you know, watch for deer is West Virginia for, you know, I love you. That's what parents always say when you leave the house, like, don't watch for deer. That's West Virginia for I love you. So you hear that, if somebody says watch for deer, that's a good sign, so. Okay, we are down to department and board reports. We first have our information coordinator and grant researcher, Callie Cronin-Sams. Callie, are you out there?
I am. Good evening. Thank you. Well, of course, everyone's probably aware, there has been uptick in cases here locally, so been sharing that information, coming from the Health Department and the County Commission and Office of Emergency Management, getting that out on our social media, and also sharing that there will be free public COVID-19 testing tomorrow from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. at the Buchanan and Upsher High School parking lot. Kind of related to that, wanted to let everyone know that Stocker, you know, has been in contact and discussion with the Health Department as well as the COVID Community Task Force, and they have been go-ahead, given the go-ahead, that they are able to keep current study hall and after-school programs going this coming week, even if schools should be shut down, but only to the current enrollees. They have reached their capacity, and they cannot take new students at this time. So we'll be putting information about that out on our website probably this evening, and our social media as well. Unrelated, also just wanted to remind folks that we will begin flushing the hydrants on Monday, believe, and that will take several days, but it'll be all around city limits, so all areas of the city, but will not include the public service districts. So that will begin on Monday. In your packet, my report says that we were experiencing server issues, and the website was not functioning correctly, but that has since been remedied. It is working just fine now, so that, just disregard that part. That was, oh, maybe a couple hours this afternoon, though it was not working. Still working on CARES Act funding. We, of course, had August submitted, but now we'll be ready to submit for September. And we're wrapping up our Buchanan Volunteer Center grant and its reporting. And the internet, I'm really thankful to Volunteer West Virginia and the Volunteer Generation Fund. We've been able to work with them to establish hubs for the Buchanan Volunteer Center at Stocker Youth and Community Center, as well as the library, and we'll be installing, Raven Rock will be installing new equipment starting Monday. We had hoped that it would, the installation would start this past Monday, but I guess there was some equipment backward. But they will begin that this coming Monday, and that's really going to vastly improve the Wi-Fi speed at those locations. And so we know that some of the students who have been using Stocker particularly, especially now that there's more students there, more people are trying to use that Wi-Fi, just really was not working at all. So by having the Volunteer Center funding available, we're going to have those hubs there, when you log on to the Wi-Fi, anyone, especially the students, will be able to use it, but when they log on, they'll be taking to the Volunteer Center's homepage, so they'll get to see different ways that they can get involved in the community, organizations that they can volunteer with, whether it's one of our own organizations, or Stocker, or working with Dixie and the Popular Flower Program, or if it's one of our community partners that's listed on the Volunteer Center, and that has their needs posted. We certainly, that'll be the first thing they see when they get on this new super-high-speed internet, and we're hoping that folks who are taking advantage of that might consider giving back by spending a little time volunteering. So that is, let's see, that National Parades Month is coming down, actually, off the LED. I was able to get the image that was used for the banner recognizing Aaron Anderson, that Teacher of the Year, and hopefully that's going to be going up on the LED soon. I did email that off to Cheryl at the Sign Company. And I think that's about all I have, unless you have questions on any of that. You can see all the posts over to the left, the partisan report, and if you had any questions about anything else.
Any questions for Callie? All right. Thanks, Callie, for your report. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for manning the phones back there.
Of course.
Okay, Jerry Arnold, Public Works Director.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Your report is excruciatingly long. I know. I was going to say half full. We've received concrete mixer and expect to have the silo set up in operation in two to three weeks. Again, as I was telling the council member through your power of the meeting, we're looking at, I'm going to take them on my smartphone now. No, you just turn the paper off, you're years old. We are, we're going to be looking at into a portable power supply for the silo, I've moved the hard wire in it right now, and again, it's, the silo itself is made to be a portable unit, so the hard wire is about half of what the portable power supply would be. The portable power supply would also be a welder, you know, so we were looking at doing a portable welder on one of our bucket trucks, so this will help out with that as well, so looking to do that. We continue to work on the planning for North Spring Street project, and I hope to have a timeline by next council meeting, just something kind of rough to go on. We had a meeting Tuesday with all the department heads that are involved, and that was pretty cool.
I'm going to try to catch it.
This mask just kind of flipped off of his face.
Do it again.
Hey, Dad, what are you doing there? So hopefully, hopefully, like I said, we'll have a preliminary timeline. We were working on some of the logistics of what utility needed to be in place or in the construction area at first, so it appears that we will probably be doing demo on the west side sidewalk first, in order to lay a two-inch residential water line. We have an 18-inch water line that is feeding in the middle of the street, feeding the hydrants. And in order to save real estate, as well as eliminate conflicts between sanitary and water, we were to lay a two-inch residential line in the sidewalk. That will give us more space in the street for sanitary work, and apparently there's a four-inch line on down the street that is serving residential needs on North Spring that intersects, goes right over top of, in an angle, the current sanitary sewer, and that's the location of what would be the new sanitary ant storm. So that's kind of things that we've been talking about. We've got, Jay is getting the packet together for bidding for geotechnical work, be able to see what kind of soil conditions we're going to be in. Good news is that Sam Ludlow was at the meeting Tuesday, and after his preliminary investigation, it looks like that we're going to be able to be much shallower than we're currently in the spring period. Of course, you know, on the Main Street end, we'll still be about the same depth, in order to facilitate existing sewer depths, but as we, it looks like when we get down near the railroad crossing, that we're going to be somewhere in the five to six foot depth on the sewer, so that's going to help us a awful lot, both from continuing maintenance and on what kind of conditions we're working. Our street department proves completed some of the maintenance work prior to winter season. They'll be doing some more patching tomorrow, and we'll be returning to work on the Gateway West project next week, or at least part of them will be back on Gateway West. I have nothing new in sewer to report from last report. Both water plant positions have been filled at the water treatment plant, John's wanting that he hired the other gentleman today. And under engineering, Jay's working on a couple water line extensions. One's direct road property, down on Rusha Corp Road, water line extension, and Little Whitsum. Amber Gates Road water line extension, up near Sam's Pizza. They're going to keep working on the alternate water line extension agreement and the cost estimate, the right-of-way agreement, so that developer can review the information, approve the project in order of the materials for construction of the new water line. And that's all I have, unless there are questions.
Question. On North Spring Street, the other utilities like gas, electric, telephone, were they in your meeting, or are they going to be brought in later?
They'll be brought in later. They have been notified, and we've also, just by telephone, Jay has reached out by telephone and talked with some of the players involved. And one of the things that we want to emphasize, and that's one of the things that we talked about, was notification to employees and writing, or of those folks in writing, because one of the things that we're conveying to them verbally right now is that we are planning for this to take place starting next spring, and that gives a lot of time, and for them to plan for upgrading their facilities if need be. So if after we complete our project and they choose not to participate in upgrading facilities, that we will not accept a street cut patch. If they do that, we will assign a distance, whatever the distance of that cut is, and they will replace that whole section of street, to make a good time, so that we don't have failing, a failing street once it's completed, so good.
Any other questions for Jerry? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right. We have, Ambie's not here this evening, but she did submit her report, and I believe that she spoke to Mr. Recorder this afternoon, and I'm going to defer to Randy to read her report to us and discuss any notes that she may have left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I talked to Ambie a little bit last evening, and then again to Barbara in her office today. So here are the balances as of September 30, 2020, and I'll start with the general fund. Money market, money market and checking account has a balance of $964,094.82. Before I go any further, not included in that amount is a recent deposit, which is reflective of the public utilities tax and the IRP truck fee. which is reflective of the public utilities tax and the IRP truck fee. A utilities tax of $71,499.37, and the truck fee is $1,728.94. So that general fund, uh, will increase, um, by $73,228.31. That is already in the bank. Continuing on from her report, the general fund CD is at $85,664. Historic landmark savings account at $3,000, $3,023. Fire truck savings at $38,348. The coal tax, uh, money market and checking account is $50,954. Municipal stabilization fund, $514,519.66. The flood control account at $9,388.60. Consolidated Public Works Fund of $125,537.78. Stockard Youth Campaign balances $426,242 plus a $12,000 pledge, bringing a total of $438,242. And the sales tax account stands at $482,965. And also the packet are the complete reported revenues, expenses. And that is Ambi's report for this meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Uh, okay. Fire Chief Kimball, are you out there, sir?
Yes, sir, I am. How are you?
Okay.
Um, in your packet, you'll have our call volume for the month of August. Just a reminder, uh, we're a third, a month behind every, every report because of our quality assurance, quality improvement policy. We have reviewed so many calls that were in the month before. Of course, this being the first, uh, it takes a period of time to do that. So you'll hear September's next month. Um, we had 104 responses in the month of August. And the year to date, through August 31st, we're at 747 responses, which is down 12% from last year. And if you go back to March, April, May, uh, the beginning of COVID, that's when our responses had dropped. Uh, we, we've made up quite a bit here lately, so we have been busy. Uh, we continue to inspect with, uh, Vince Smith and Tanner Smith and the Fire Department, myself have been going around to city-owned buildings, doing, uh, building inspection and fire inspections on these buildings. They're actually going pretty well. Uh, every complex has had a few minor violations, but all in all, they're doing real well. The street department, uh, has been here the last couple days. I want to thank Jerry, uh, for, uh, front door, uh, when this building was built, that there was some, some, uh, work problems on it, and it wasn't put in as solid as it probably should have been. Uh, but I can tell you what, when it's done, uh, I won't have to worry about this spring work on this door bending. So thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
The Fire Civil Services, uh, we completed our candid physical agility test last week. Uh, we had, uh, one gentleman that stayed on the list, and we had five new applicants. This is to establish a list that's required by state code. Uh, all five people passed the CPAT test. That is the first time that's ever happened. Uh, the RIT exam will be due the 10th of October. And we've had, uh, coming up, uh, the 4th through the 10th of October is fire prevention. And in your packet, there's some statistics on, uh, fire-related death injuries and the cost of fires in America. In 2019, there were 1.3 billion fires in America. Uh, 3,700 citizens died in those fires, uh, almost 17,000 injured, and $14.8 billion in, uh, deaths. So, um, that's quite a bit. Uh, we, we are actually doing something different this year because of the COVID. We are creating a video, uh, to provide to the schools. Since we can't go in each classroom and do like we normally do, that the teachers will present to their students. And I, I have a feeling it's gonna turn out, uh, pretty nice. And, uh, hopefully here before long, it'll, you know, on our Facebook page too. So everybody will be able to see it. We have had 47 COVID tests administered to firefighters in our department. All have come back negative. Thank God. Uh, there are some fire departments around the state. There was one in All County the other day that was shut down for a period of time because of COVID exposures. Uh, actually, the Fire Chief of the State Fire Department died in the line of duty. He, uh, he got exposed to COVID on a call, and he ended up dying from it. Uh, that was earlier, or the last, uh, last week. And, uh, that was terrible here. But that's all I have unless you all have any questions.
Any questions for Chief Kimball? All right. Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Keep everyone safe, Chief. All right. Uh, we're down to City Attorney Tom O'Neil. Do you wanna just defer to, uh?
It's all strategic.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. All right, counsel, uh, we're down to correspondence and information. In your packet, you have notice from the West Virginia Office of Insurance Commissioner on the availability of the National Flood Insurance Program. Um, City PR noticed the City of Buckhannon Water Department flushing fire hydrants as, uh, Callie, uh, alluded to, starting on the 5th of this month until complete. And then, uh, also lists the final City of Buckhannon Board appointments fiscal year 2020, 2021. Under the consent agenda, uh, we have the approval of the minutes of regular meeting uh, on 9/20, or 9/17 of 2020, and then a special meeting on 9/24 of 2020. We have, uh, approval of building and wiring permits and approval, approval of paying of the bills. Uh, I would entertain a motion that we would approve our consent agenda. The motion by Councilman Rigor, we have a second. Second by Council Lady Al Ball, is their discussion. Hearing the need for none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those likes and a thumbs?
Aye.
Forget about the thumbs. Always forget about the thumbs. Uh, we'll let the minutes, uh, reflect that it passed unanimously. Okay.
Dave's still there?
What's that?
Dave is still there.
Thomas, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay. Make sure he didn't fall asleep.
Nope.
All right.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Strategic issues for discussion or vote. F1, uh, I spoke to several of you today, um, and, uh, I've spoken with our county commissioners. I've spoken with, uh, Susie McKissick, uh, spoken with Jeff Harvey. Um, about a week ago, it was my recommendation that we just go ahead and, and just set the time and date for trick-or-treat and let it go. Um, as the week has progressed, um, I think that that's irresponsible of us. Um, if we were in the green, I think we could, I think it would be, you know, more than understandable to have, uh, citywide and countywide trick-or-treat, um, as, as, as normal as it could possibly be. Um, at this point, it is gonna be my recommendation that we do not set trick-or-treat, uh, of this council meeting, but we hold off two weeks and we reevaluate and see what the numbers in our county look like at our October 15th council meeting. As many of us know, uh, our community is facing a little bit of a spike right now as well as, uh, it has reached our school system. Um, when I had spoken to Jeff Harvey, we, we kind of talked about, well, um, we would go ahead and set the date, and if Upstate County schools went into orange or red, we would then reevaluate. Well, that was a few nights ago, and now it's, we are looking like we're gonna be at orange. So, um, I, I want to be very clear, we're not canceling trick-or-treat. We are not saying we're not going to have trick-or-treat. We are going to just, uh, wa, monitor the numbers very closely. We're gonna work with, um, the, uh, our county commissioners because there is also trick-or-treat in the county outside of the corporate limits as well. And we're gonna work with, um, our, uh, our health experts up the street as well as, uh, Dr. Harvey, uh, who, uh, who works very hard in our community on, with, with the COVID-19, uh, caseload. Um, so, uh, and I think when I spoke to, uh, you all today, just kind of, because this thing changes, and then I reached out this morning, uh, after we learned that we had 37 active cases in, in Upstate County. That's my recommendation, but if you all would like to chime in and, and, and give your thoughts, uh, feel free.
I, I, correct, or with what you're saying? Want to say anything else?
Well, I think that's, that's what makes sense. And, you know, I apologize to those, to parents who wanna, you know, buy costumes and, and, and folks who, who want to buy candy to give out. I, I know that, you know, it's, it's that time right now to do that, but, uh, I think it's, it's advantageous and intelligent of us to, um, watch the numbers, postpone this decision, and reevaluate, uh, on the October 15th meeting. And we'll hopefully have a downward trend in our community. So...
Appreciate, appreciate your, your apology, but not necessary because I think you're doing the prudent thing, Mr. Mayor. I think we have to look at this with a clear mind. Yes, we want to say to the kids, go out and have fun, but we also, more importantly, want the children to remain healthy.
Right.
And this is, uh, this is more than just a little spike. This is a pretty, this is an attention, attention getter.
It is.
Possibly a wake-up call. That we've got a little lax. For me?
They've canceled with school right now?
I believe.
It's, uh, I don't know that the, it's, it's looking like, I mean, the, the way the state guidelines read, that if your county is orange or red, you cannot have in-person, uh, uh, instruction.
Right.
And it, by the numbers right now, I believe our county is in the orange. So therefore, we, that will not take place next week if things don't change. There's a, West Virginia, the governor of West Virginia issues a map on Saturday afternoon, evening, um, to, and, and, and so if we are orange at the official date in which, on Saturday, which the map is released, we will not have in-person classes next week the way I understand it. So, um, if we're not, if, if, if it's, if it's, if it's unlikely that we're gonna have in-person classes, it seems, it seems premature to, to, to set a trick-or-treat time. So, um, we will, we will not take action on that tonight. We will put it on our agenda for the October 15th meeting. But again, for the benefit of the press, I want to make sure that we understand we're not canceling. This is, we're just postponing the decision to set the time and date till our next meeting. So. Um, F2, property acquisition consideration and, and/or vote on the purchase-sale agreement of the Mudlake, of Mudlake Road property. Um, I will ask our city attorney how we want to do. I prepared a little presentation, um, and to, to kind of give a visual of, of what we're looking at here. Um, if you want to open this up, uh, and kind of...
Well, I'm happy to, to follow your pleasure. I can, I can just hit the highlights of the purchase-sale agreement, and then the counsel can, you can, uh, run the discussion from there, if that, if that would work. Members of council, uh, what you have before you, um, and for members who are on the phone, uh, we'll have this distributed by, um, by email. What you have is a draft, uh, purchase-sale agreement for the city's acquisition of, uh, that property known as 395 Mudlake Road, which is, uh, just over five acres across Mudlake Road from the city's, uh, current, uh, transfer station, uh, facility and, uh, and waste garage. The, uh, the primary, the main terms of the, uh, the agreement are that the sale price of the property would be, uh, $1.5 million, and that closing would take place no later than December 31st. There are, um, express provisions in this, uh, agreement acknowledging that, uh, in order for this, uh, transaction to close, the, uh, the city council would have to adopt an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of the property, and the city's building commission would have to, um, acquire and approve financing for the property. That would be, uh, if the council determined, uh, we want to proceed with the consideration of the transaction, the next step would be, uh, to convene a meeting of the, uh, the building commission and begin that, uh, begin that process. With that, um, Al, uh, the, uh, the agreement provides for the city to acquire not just the, um, the land and the structures, but all of the machinery, equipment, furniture, fixtures, finishes, and everything that is present on the property, um, and present. So, uh, with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, I think we've all gone out there and looked at this property, and, uh, when we consider that we were contemplating building, uh, one building is a new street garage, uh, that was going to cost around $950,000. This acquisition with five acres of rock base, uh, and three large buildings with heated floors, there, uh, represents, uh, a lot of value. And, uh, I strongly support the acquisition of this property.
The, um, the, the appropriate, and just for the benefit of, of you, Mr. Mayor and the council, the, um, so what would be an order would be, if the council wanted to consider it, would be a motion to, um, adopt the text of the agreement and authorize the mayor to execute it.
So moved. Second. Is there further discussion? Hearing for the need for none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. On the phone? Pam and, uh, Dave, are you there to, to vote?
I'm having trouble picking up.
We can hear you.
All of a sudden, a lot of static.
We can, we can hear you pretty well.
The, uh, tell me what you're voting on, guy, 'cause I couldn't hear everything.
This is a vote to approve the text of the purchase-sale agreement and authorize the mayor to sign it.
The, uh, Robbie's gonna make the presentation.
Yeah, we're gonna, I'm gonna show a few pictures just for the benefit of the, of everyone here as well as the press.
Yeah, well, we discussed that last, uh, council meeting executive session. I think it's, uh, I, I, I still have a real tough time, like, understanding what, you're talking about the Mudlake property?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I'm for, I'm for doing that. Thinking of that.
Yes. So, yes, look, yes. How about Pam? Pam, everybody still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay. Your vote?
Uh, yes.
So that's, okay. So, you have a... Okay. Um, Randy, if you would, uh... I'm sorry. Okay, I think we're good. Um, counsel...
Can I call it back into you, your phone? 'Cause I'm, I really can't hear anything.
Can, can, can you hear me now?
Barely.
Okay, well, let me, let, I'll call you...
There's just so much static.
Okay, let me...
My phone, I...
It probably is. Let me call you back.
Okay. Hello?
Is that better?
Yes, look, I've got static. It's my phone, I think. Hold a weak position. That's better. It's better now.
Okay. All right. Um, counsel and, and members of the press, um, ready to do this and so on, um, of where we're at right now and, and what, and what we're looking at. So, uh, Randy, if you'll drive it, I'd appreciate it. So this is our current city street garage at the end of Factory Street. Um, you, and then you...
I think, if, you know, while we had this picture up, would it be okay if Jerry kind of explained everything that...
Sure.
This building, um, takes care of in the course of a week? I mean, just a quick driver review, 'cause the block goes on there.
You know, the, the block size there, this first part, it mainly, uh, houses our truck fleet, our dump trucks and, and our bucket truck fleet. The door there houses the street sweep. And again, that has to be in a heated area because it has water on it, you know, water tank on it, much like a fire truck. This portion of this building is what metal building. This portion of this building is what metal building. That building has, it's non-heated. We store like our road graders and that kind of thing in that building. But in, within the building itself, there is a little, just a little area that is a carpenter shop. It has its own garage door and does have a heating unit. This section here is all storied for, this little section in the front, is all storage for electrical supplies, hand tools, that kind of thing. And then just to run down the next, as you get to that next slide, you will see that salt, topsoil storage in the building there by the dump truck, you can see the new, actually see the new.
Hey Jerry, this is Callie.
Speak up.
I'm going to interrupt just for a second because I have a feeling Pam probably can't hear you or the others on the phone. I'm having a hard time hearing.
Move that microphone over here.
Jerry, take your mask off as you're talking.
Is that better?
Yes. Pam, if it would be helpful, I've placed the presentation slides are on the front page of our website.
Looking at the second picture, Pam.
Wanted to be able to view them while Jerry's talking.
Thank you, Callie.
Okay, I will mute myself now.
Okay, can you hear?
Unmute, Callie, can you hear okay?
Yes. Yes, I had to get unmuted, but yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
The building to the right, in front of the main building, or in front of the, where the salt shed is there, the dump truck that I was just explaining. This building was purchased back probably about two thousand, I want to say. Maybe a little bit before then. But it's actually, it was a house with an attached garage. And that was converted at the time into an office. It was actually the opposite of the street commission at the time. And the garage was used as the sign shop. It currently, our horticulturist has her area in the front half, what was the office. There's some storage of banners, that kind of thing in there. And then now the back portion of that houses, is just storage for like pushmowers and that kind of stuff. But that's what you pair. Back behind the trees, you can't see, is another shed that all our spreader boxes are stored in for our trucks for winter storage. And again, the thing is, a lot of the space that we use is simply storage or equipment storage. And, you know, keeping that stuff inside is the longevity of it. With the new facility, the equipment, because currently we do not have room to park that dump truck and some of the other trucks over there, the horticultural trucks, that kind of thing. We do not have enough storage space for those vehicles inside of a facility at this time. So that would also give us, give us the ability to do that. The main thing, and Robbie pointed out real well, the mayor has in his photos on, you know, the roof on the current block building. The current block building, if you were to upgrade all of the mechanical systems in it, then it would be a pretty sound building, I believe. But to do that, we're so deep into the flood plain, to do that, you would probably surpass the 50% value of the building that we're allowed to put into the building being in the flood plain now before having to elevate it. As Jack knows, it's extremely difficult to elevate a shop floor because you lose your overhead. And that building in 1985, that building, this furthest from the river, the marks were just below the tops of the doors where the floodwaters got in that building in 85. In 93, I started in 93. The flood of 93 got up just below the doorknobs in the office. So again, longevity of that metal building back there has far exceeded. And it's been, over the years, as the department's grown, it's been kind of piecemeal together. And, you know, right now, we just could not upgrade. As you see, we do not have the property to expand in any direction. And we cannot upgrade the current facility because of the restrictions placed by the Buccaneers. So that's kind of it for me.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That just reiterates what he said, and it's a different view. You see that there's just no more room to expand. Keep on going. The roof on the left is the roof that is really in desperate need of replacement. As you can see, there's just, there's a lot of areas where there's just things stored outside because we're just, we're out of room in the area. More outside storage. Okay, here is the, for the northern part of Buchanan, here is the flood zone map. There's a lot of Buchanan that's in the flood zone. So pay attention to the red and then keep on going. So the entire property is completely part of the flood zone. Every ounce that we operate there is totally within it. Okay, this is the new piece of property. This is 395 Mudlick Road that we're interested in purchasing. There are three buildings there. Keep on going. There's five acres within the fenced area. And there's 44,000 square feet under roof. And if you'll recall, we had 18,000 square feet under roof down here on Factory Street. Right across the road at the top is the transfer station. So they're very close by each other. And the area where there's some administrative offices can see both pieces of property, which is important from a management standpoint. Each building that you see here was originally cost, it originally cost about a million dollars to construct. So there's three buildings, about a million apiece is what you're looking at as it costs to build. If the acquisition were to be approved, this would essentially, we would essentially be purchasing the buildings here for about $33 a square foot. And the actual, the cost of new construction today would be roughly about $130 a square foot. So that means the city of Buchanan, if we were to construct from scratch a new facility for the same purchase price, we'd only be able to put about 10,000 to 11,000 square feet under roof. And that's just basic bare bones. So this is, this is much greater than that. There's a $300,000 value crane included for the use of commercial welding. There it is again. There's, the office space is complete with conference room area. And all of those, as Randy clicks through here, all of the office furniture, as Tom mentioned, is included in this deal. There are restrooms and locker rooms in one of the buildings.
Shower?
Are there?
There's one.
There's a shower, yeah.
Yeah. There's one, but there's room for upgrading.
Correct.
Is that a basketball hoop in there?
Yeah, we'll put one up. There's Randy's new city vehicle. He's really excited.
Yeah, I made sure if we do this, the vehicle you see there is included, so I needed a vehicle. Get it in there.
With that license.
Yeah.
Just a couple of additional notes. If, you know, but there's, because there's such a large amount of space out there, if Buchanan continues to grow in the westbound direction, this property actually also has enough room to potentially, down the road, incorporate substations for both our police and fire departments, which would effectively reduce response times to residents and businesses that could populate the area. There's also potential for some training facilities with our fire and police if needed be. And if we did have a training facility, we would pretty much automatically lower our ISO rating, which continue, if we lower the ISO rating on insurance, the less businesses and residents pay on insurance premiums. So it's, there's a lot of facets to this. There's a lot of potential for this. It's really, it's a great piece of property. I know that everyone who's been out there has been impressed by it. And I really, it has my support. And I'm glad it has the council's support as well to, for us to grow our street and parks department in that direction and really not only expand, but to be able to carry out that department in the best way possible with a great facility. So, so anyway, thanks to, you know, to Jerry and to Tom for all your work on this thus far. And, you know, we will continue to get this, to push this forward, to advance this, for this to be our new facility. Does anybody have anything they want to add or any questions at this point moving forward?
Well, I kind of put Jerry on the spot there to kind of give an overview of what he's dealing with now and what his different, well, his street department, for one thing, he's dealing with. And one of the things I learned very quickly when I became a part of the city family was that we ask a lot from our crews. We really ask a lot and they deliver above and beyond what we ask. And for us to continue to do that, we need to give them not only the tools to do it, but to make an environment that can continue to breed productivity. And, you know, Jerry, and like me, there's certain, I'll share this story. You said sometimes these little tiny showers, you feel like a bear in a phone booth. Well, I'm sure they feel like a bear in a phone booth when they're in that street department, really trying to make things happen on a daily basis. So, you know, this is, this is a positive move in helping our crews deliver the product and deliver the service that they need to do.
The mayor was at the street department today at lunchtime. And he can attest that part of our, because of the COVID restrictions now, part of our crew has to eat lunch in a open bay. I mean, there's, we've got one of the park benches set up there, but in order to, for everyone to be inside and it will eat their lunch. You know, some folks have to eat out in the shop space. So, you know, this gives the ability to have all the employee comforts that we need as long, as well as the much-needed shower room. Again, that's something that we do not have in streets and parks right now at all. And, you know, again, the ability to expand our operations and actually have the required room and space and designated areas that we currently don't have.
And I'll reiterate once again, and Callie did a phenomenal job getting this up on the city's website very quickly.
Absolutely.
And the mayor, kudos to you for getting some great photos.
I know a little bit about, no, it'd be dangerous about pictures.
That's a rumor.
Yes, we do want to thank Callie for putting this up. And if our residents have, want to, you know, see it in detail, it's on the website for them to look at as well. Okay, our third and three of three, under strategic issues for discussion and or vote, as we talked about earlier in the meeting, this is a discussion and possible vote to revise downtown parking ordinance. And counsel, you have a, you have this language in your packet near the very, very end. It actually is the last three pages of the packet. And I'll defer to our city attorney to walk us through this.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council has reported ordinance, a draft ordinance number 447. It amends and reenacts ordinance, three different ordinances that are already on the books. Ordinance numbers 409, 422, and 435. Those are our currently active parking ordinances. Each of them do a little bit different things. This would only deal with enforcement of the existing parking law. It doesn't change any parking regulations. It only makes different requirements with respect to enforcement. In particular, it sets, in Article 1, it sets the violation fine at $25 and it provides for a first offense warning in all cases. It's a shall issue a warning for a first offense. No subsequent warning is required prior to this issuance of a citation. It also provides in the second paragraph there of Article 1, that the clock starts running on your second offense at the moment the first warning is issued. In other words, if you get a warning and your car is still there two hours later, you're liable to receive a citation. So at that, so in that case, a person would have to be parked in a spot for four hours before they would have a citation issued.
Didn't we hear that the municipal judge ruled that you need to wait two weeks after the current second warning before you can write a citation?
Well, that might be.
Because there wasn't a period of time for them to get it.
Yeah, I can't, I mean, I, yeah. That may be an interpretation by the judge as with the old ordinance. If the council wanted to move forward with this regime, I'd have to have a conversation with her regarding how she would interpret this ordinance, which is pretty clear language. Again, the notice is, you know, the notice is like any other criminal violation out there. You don't, you're not entitled to a warning. The city is granting the privilege of receiving a warning for the first offense. So if there's a, if there was a suggestion that the city had to wait, again, I'm not speaking as to old ordinance language, but under this ordinance language, if there was an argument made that the city had to wait two weeks before issuing a citation, I would disagree with that strenuous thing.
I think we should know that, Tom, before we vote on this, though, don't you think?
Well, it's a little, well, it's a little difficult to talk to a judge about a case that hasn't really arisen yet. That's the Yankee.
Well, these are previous.
It's pro-spam.
Previous cases that she was rolling on.
Up to the old order.
I don't know, I'd, to be frank, I don't think any of those situations have ever been really brought to my attention.
Tom, are we, are we carrying through the repeat offenders, the fine would go up?
If this ordinance does not provide for that, if the council wanted to make, you know, wanted to amend the ordinance to provide for that, I mean, that just happened to direct me on how you want to draft it.
I would think that up until this point, it's been cumulative for 24 months. So you had one, we're going to have one warning in a 24-month period instead of two. And I would advocate that we have to step this penalty up subsequently if your second offense and within 24 months goes to $50. And your third offense would go to $75. There's got to be some way to impact these people that have chosen not to abide by the policy.
Otherwise, somebody may determine that a $25 fine every couple of weeks.
They only get caught one out of 20 times, then they feel they're in value.
Right.
I agree. I think we need to have a stair step on the second, third, fourth, and so on offense.
Yeah. So it gets to $200?
Right, yeah, to say not more than.
Or 100, that's a lot of steps, like 25 bucks a pod.
We can make a third, I mean, you can make a first offense 25, a second offense 50, and a third or subsequent 100.
Okay.
I would say that would get us there.
And is it still 24 months or since we're? And is it still 24 months or since we're reducing the warnings to one? Do we have it to 12 months?
Right now, it's, it's just, under this, it's, you get one warning ever.
Yeah.
And you don't, you're not entitled to, under this draft, you're not entitled to a new warning in 24 months. I'm not sure I, I'm not sure I understand the rationale behind that kind of.
There really isn't.
Well, it was trying to be non cumulative and being cognizant that once in a while a business owner pulls up front to unload something and then there's a crisis and they get caught up, get to move their car.
In a situation like that, the parking enforcement officer has the discretion to issue. Parking enforcement has the discretion to issue subsequent warnings. They're just not required to. And they're only required to issue one warning. After that, it would be, if there is justification for a subsequent warning, it'd be at the discretion of the officer, whether it's a parking officer or a city police officer who can enforce this too. And actually, in fact, ordinance number 409 has a provision in it that the city can take, and I'm not sure you necessarily want to open this can of worms, but I advise you that it is already on the books, that the city can recruit volunteer parking enforcement officers who can be trained and then deputized in order to enforce the parking ordinance.
There you go.
Well, I like that idea. Now what?
That's already on the books.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Well, that goes back to your discussion about other communities in kind of a citizen's arrest, other citizens that see the violators.
You could empower the VIPS or someone else that wants to, you know, spend their time or. The main point with Bryson pointed out, we could do any policy we want. But if we're enforcing it for, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, then it's, they're going to take, they're going to know that. And it's, we have to somehow, I think, arbitrate, pick day, random day, one day a week and enforce it for the 18 hours or 20 hours a day that you have the policy. And then they don't know when and where it's going to get impacted.
And I want to make sure too, if you're repeat offender and you get up to that $100 level, every ticket you get after that is $100. It doesn't reset.
Right, yeah.
But without the 24-month reset, that's forever and ever.
What's the drawback on that?
I, you know.
If it's the same person?
I don't know. I'm just pointing out that.
I don't see a drawback, but I'll think.
And it could be, it's against the car, not the driver. So if you have a family car and your teenager parks it on Main Street and then all of a sudden you're getting $100 tickets.
Well, again, this is, again, to highlight the discretion of the officer. Whenever you have second or subsequent offense charges, whether it's a serious criminal offense or not, just because it is a second offense doesn't mean it needs to be or it will be charged as a second offense. DUI is kind of the classic instance of this. Just because you've committed a DUI for the second time doesn't mean that you're going to be charged with DUI second offense because it's, and the reason for that is because it's a misdemeanor and so is first. You don't get the felonies until the third offense. But the point is that a situation where, like that's being described, a family with multiple users of the car, each one independently gets, you know, ticketed. And those are instances in which the parking enforcement or whoever's enforcing can exercise a discretion to charge at a lesser level.
Including the judge, correct?
The judge or the city attorney can plead down, plead down the offenses.
So how do we address the person who intentionally is gaming the system and rolling their car forward or backward or putting it on the other side of the street? I think we need a cumulative three hours in a 24-hour period.
I mean. My response to your question is to keep the ordinance simple. And the more complicated you make the ordinance, the more room you make for gaming. And if you have a simpler ordinance, invest discretion in the enforcing officer within reason, then you can deal with those situations. We know who the, as Bryson was talking about earlier, we know who the violators are, we know where they are. This, this draft prohibit, or at least one, or at least a draft that I had, prohibited moving the vehicle to an adjacent parking spot in order to reset the time. And I need to see if that's still in this or I can put it back in there.
Yes, as you make those other changes.
I think, I mean, we, we were told at Consolidated Public Works that we had a uniform officer go have a conversation with one of the chronic violators and ask him, hey, we're all in this together, will you get with it? And he took his car and from one side of the street to the other following the conversation. So when you have that kind of circumstance, if you don't have something to use as leverage against them, what, what good is it? I mean.
Well, I think this does that. I mean, I think this draft provides that leverage. And I think the moving, I think if we're clear about moving the vehicle is not a, you cannot reset your time by moving the vehicle. I think that would address that issue that you're describing.
So you're saying if this, if someone comes up and we document that it was there for 45 minutes and it rolls forward for an hour and a half, then he's 15 minutes old, if we can document that.
Yeah, I think so, yes. If I put that clause back in the draft, I do.
Well, whatever, you know, we need to toe in the toe box that to use against these particular cases, you know. Otherwise, we're going to be back here. And I just, I just, I have a concern that we amp up the penalties or the enforcement against these very few people that going to catch some people who aren't a problem. As Bryson said, you know, when there's only 50% occupancy of the spots and someone does it, they're going to get caught up into this.
Well, and there's also, and I, and I think philosophically, I think, well, Bryson's right, in my opinion, in the sense that if we, if we're not at capacity, then what's, then really what's the problem? You have individual shop owners who resent the space or two in front of their spot being taken up all the time, even though there are plenty of other spots farther up and down Main Street. I guess I sympathize and understand that, that criticism. That would, I guess, argue against the capacity argument. And the question is, the, I think you said earlier that each parking spot in front of the vehicle is worth $75 an hour. And if, or approximately, if, if the two spots in front of one particular spot are chronically taken up in violation of the ordinances, but there are plenty of other vacancies on Main Street, our capacity isn't being reached, but that individual shop owner is being harmed by the violation.
I agree. Either it's raining or it's snowing, you know, people want convenience.
I'm going to suggest that we treat this as a draft this evening. Since we've asked our city attorney to add a couple of things, why don't we have this on as a first reading as the ordinance presented at our October 15th meeting with the changes we've asked him to make. And I would suggest in the meantime, any council members who want to further discuss this with Tom, please feel free to do so, or myself, please feel free to do so. This is, you know, we have, it was a very lengthy discussion. It's been a very lengthy discussion since the first of July in Consolidated Public Works. You know, and this is, that's where this is coming from, is to try to, you know, try to simplify the current system that we have in place. So if we're collectively good with considering this a draft and getting a first reading on the books for our August, or August, if you want to say August, October 15th meeting, that would be my suggestion.
Tom, do you mind an overview of the modifications that we're going to put on this document?
That the next draft will include second and third offenses at enhanced fines. The provision that moving the vehicle to an adjacent spot does not reset the two-hour limit. And I'll think of some way to word that because you want to provide for people just moving up one space or back one space and somebody maybe, you know, just moving, you know, to the other side of the street. So maybe within the same, you know, another space within the same block. I don't, we'll do something, but because you've got somebody who's one in the Main Street, drives all the way down to the other end, do you, what do you do in that situation? And we're going, keep it as clear as possible. But anyway, no, it'll provide, it'll provide for no resetting of the clock by moving spaces. And I guess the only provision that I'm not clear on whether we're including or not is the 24-month window.
I don't think we need it. I don't think we need it. Go ahead.
You know, what do other communities do that have the same similar plan? I'm just thinking of the logistics and the record keeping.
I have a feeling that most other communities do not dedicate amount of time and attention to this issue that this community does.
And I understand wanting to be visitor-friendly and all that. But this seems to me just be so cumbersome to maintain the records and to track Randy Sanders as a park, as a dirt dump park from one spot to another to another. Or Randy's very clever, he's going to park it on the other end of town for two hours. That's not adjacent. So that starts splitting hairs with some, you know, with the language here. And I'm just a little perplexed. I understand, I agree with the intent in behind the ordinance and being visitor-friendly. But practically speaking, I'm going to be upfront, I need to be the person trying to track all this information.
Well, I, the, without a software program, the communities that have done this, in the example, Sedona, Arizona, has enforcement, there's a three-hour aggregate daily parking limit. And someone walks around and scans the plate and it enters a handheld system. They've got a ticket writer that's clipped on their belt. They hit the button and it prints the warning or the ticket and the number is preserved. We don't have, that's a $25, $30,000 investment. But I'll give you an example, when I was in Sedona and I was conscious of being within my time limit and for some reason I reached under the seat of the rental car and that car had got a warning about two weeks before. So I was at risk because the car was, now, this is in Sedona, Arizona. But we're trying to treat visitors with the same thought process that they don't get caught up in ours, within our strategy to deal with people that have no intention of following the rules anyhow.
I think as well, Jack, this has been brought to the Consolidated Public Works Board now on multiple occasions. There are some chronic offenders in the downtown area. There are business people who have expressed a serious and legitimate concern and this is our intent to answer those concerns as well as give a provision in our city structure to deal with the chronic offenders in an appropriate manner.
Well, I agree with Bryson because I've made a similar overture in the Consolidated Public Works Board meeting that a one warning to the law-abiding citizen or visitor would be enough to say, hey, okay, I did, I'm, I've overstepped, you know. And I'm of the belief that when you visit a community and you travel to somewhere else that's not your hometown. Thomas, are you there? David?
Snoring?
Thomas? Okay.
We were worried about you.
Okay.
You might want to mute here.
Moving on.
Lost my thought. Anyway.
That's because those are phones that don't have a static.
We heard this daddy.
Whatever you say. Oh, Lord.
All right, moving on.
Okay. I think, I think we're just going to treat this as a draft. I think we need to let Tom.
What are we doing with the 24-month?
I would say, I would say leave it out for now. It can always, if it's the will of the council, at the next go-around, we can entertain putting it back in.
You're going to leave the reset out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's best, where?
Yeah.
Got it, first one.
Uh-huh. Okay. That, so we have finished with F3 and we'll look forward to a, to a first reading coming up at the 15th meeting.
Just one more comment, is since this is on the license plate owned, not the VIN number or anything else. So I, in effect, if I buy, I've had the same license plate for the last five cars I've owned. So it's a pretty long span without, you know.
Are you that forgetful?
Yeah, I can forget stuff over 10 of the.
Okay, we are down to council comments and announcements. Mary, we start with you.
Okay, we attended the waste board today. We had a great meeting and we discussed an item that I want to talk about real quick. Saw it on an American Legion magazine that had stuck away about six years ago. And I was cleaning out it and then I brought it to show to Jack and Mayor and Jared. It's a used old mailbox, you know? And they colored it patriotic and it's a place that you could drop off flags that have been, instead of throwing them in the trash. We want to, wanted to do it with honor, okay? And have that, have that place. People bring them to City Hall and they always put it on, let me know that I've got a couple of flags there. We've got a little box inside of our building, but we're not always open. So, and people call me and they'll bring them and drop them off at my house. So I'll load them back in, take them back to the American Legion and we'll, you know, and the VFW does the same thing. So I think this would be a great honor for the veterans who served for those flags and a lot of them are funeral flags. And people turn those over to me. But anyways, I think we liked it, right Jerry? Yeah, and the mayor did too. So we're going to be looking into how we could do that, okay?
We always want to encourage people to properly and respectfully dispose of flags.
Yes.
And the American Legion and the VFW are very kind to offer that as a service to our community.
And we usually do a retirement service, but we haven't been able to do that. And we need to do that, but we can't do that right now to properly, you know, with children gathering and all that. We just, we don't wanna do anything like that right now.
Right. No, that sounds great. Thank you for, for your work with that. Mary.
Mary, I've got a very large rural box. I let my grandkids play with it after changing it out. Let's not do anything. If they don't want it, I'll bring it in to you.
What is it?
A very large rural mailbox. It stands about this tall, about that long, about that wide.
I don't know if it'll be, I want a big one. So I can put the mayor's flag on. And the guys can do all scrap and stuff and then weld it. Can't you make me one, Jared? See, but you, you're welcome to drop it off at the house, and I'd be glad to look at it.
Okay.
Because I could use a bigger one in the office.
Sure.
Okay.
That might work.
Thank you. Pam?
Well, it's early to think about, but no, it's not either. But in about seven weeks, we will be putting up the Christmas decorations down town. And I'm looking for volunteers to help work on the wreaths and the other things for the decorating. And I am working with Burma, and we are going to have a Christmas around-the-world theme this year. And we think it's really a purpose, you know, due to the pandemic and all that. So if anybody has any ideas or I really need volunteers, I'd like for them to get ahold of me.
Sounds good. Pam, or, I'm sorry, Callie, would you, if you're still out there, could you work with Pam and maybe create a few Facebook posts on our city page, letting people know that Pam is looking for volunteers?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
And we can put that on the Volunteer Center, too. And maybe there's volunteer parking attendants, too, it sounds like.
That's right.
Yes.
Sign everybody up.
I'll be talking to you, Callie. Okay, sounds good, Pam, thanks.
Anything else, Pam?
No, I'll sit down.
All right, thank you. CJ?
I'm good.
J. David Thomas?
No comments this evening. You all have a great weekend.
All right, you, too. Jack?
I don't have any comments.
Mr. Sanders?
Just to reiterate the seriousness of the situation with the COVID-19 and the coronavirus in the community. I just feel like sometimes we kind of forget about it. You know, we haven't, it hasn't been, we haven't been smacked in the face for a while, but I think this week, we have it smacked in the face. So remain vigilant, wear your mask, wash your hands, social distance, all of those things. Let's get through it and stay as healthy as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, at the Waste Board this evening, we voted to approve on final draft the City of Buckham Recycling Guide that Callie worked on for us. We will provide, it's on the, Callie, is it on the website yet?
Not yet, but it could be tomorrow or very soon.
Okay. So we're going to electronically circulate that. It's going to be, it's basically what, it gives them national information about goods that are recycled. And then on the front and on the back, it shows what folks can and cannot recycle at our, at our center. You know, aluminum and steel cans are a go. Newspapers and office papers are a go. Corrugated, I can't say that with my mouth, cardboard is good. And then number one, plastic water bottles, soda bottles, and number two, milk jugs are accepted. Not accepted are aerosols, pet food, or any can with a liner, magazines and glossy paper, pizza boxes, cereal boxes and cardboard, and any other plastic. So this will be circulated electronically on our Facebook page as well as on our website. And then, as Callie mentioned, as, we might put a few hard copies in some hot-trafficed areas around our community just for folks to know. We'll also put a hard copy in our City Hall lobby. We also, we always wanna remind folks that curbside recycling and city limits is still going on. First and Third Tuesdays, put your things out Monday night because they come early, and then the Mudlick Center is open. Okay, that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Hearing the need for none, I will entertain a motion that we end our meeting at 8:35 T.M. All right, everybody have a great weekend.